Two seats available, who needs two seats back there? I got a front row, second to the seat, come on up, right over here. You're on row number three. This is a sound check for the people in the back, how's the sound sound? And the people in the bar, can you hear it? If you have any trouble, my name is Albert, I'll be your sound guy for tonight. I got your toes right over here, I got the toes in the front, so if you see me, look at me, point at me, and say, "Albert, turn your head, and here." Turn it down, you're out of here. I didn't tell you about that part. Folks, can we get your attention? Folks, can we get your attention?
We can't hear anything but you.
Alrighty, dude. Folks, this is Lauren, right here to my left. She just brought two poster boards for our fire department. If you want to sign them, please sign them, share from the heart, tell them so much appreciation and what these folks have done for us and our community, so Lauren, let's give Lauren a round of applause, and with lovely little ladies. Give James a round of applause, it was an idea. Thank you so much, folks, so we have the air conditioning, we turned it down, thank you so much. We have the air conditioning, we turned it down a little bit, so we're doing our best to make it kick in. Folks, some people ask us if we open the doors, but we're just leaving it up for right now, closing it up for right now. You've got it, so, you've got it. Until then, just stay tuned, we'll be starting very soon, folks, thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, just got an update, synchronize your watches for 6:30, 6:30 will be starting in another fifteen minutes. Folks, if you're in the back, and need to go outside, they're clearing out the table out there, you can hear that there's a speaker in the back, outside. So you can hear clearly out there, and you can enjoy that nice fresh air out there too, so there is a speaker, thank you.
I mean, if you can still hear them, yeah. If I could still hear the cameras too.
Right now, it's a three-four on the way here. There is seating outside, speakers outside, I think that's pretty soon. Oh yeah, I think these are fully equipped.
I got it, I got it. Ladies and gentlemen, can I get your attention, please? Good evening, folks, my name's Albert Federova, my wife and I just moved here to the YLP April 1st. We're actually here involved in our community, and we're here to help support each other. Here is a basket, and also has some paper in this basket, with the pins, you see, if you have any concerns or questions, please go to the hallway around the corner, and write those questions down, and drop them inside this basket. So later on tonight, we'll get together, and we'll just answer the questions that you folks ask. So synchronize your watches, what time do you folks have? I hear 6:21 to 6:22, we're starting at 6:30, so stay tuned, thank you so much. Folks in the back, folks in the back, if you need, we have a speaker outside too, if it's overcrowded, fresh air back there. Tables are available, there are seats are available, there is a speaker, so you can tell, you can hear what's happening. Under these doors, everything else is open for people back there. Ladies and gentlemen, your attention, please. Folks, if you look to my right, which is your left, we have Simi, my panel light for tonight. This here is a teleprompter, and this is going to be on the internet. So if you have, anybody in this room has their phone on, a speakerphone, or regular phone, we ask that you turn that off, because it will cause feedback on this machine, and that'll interfere everybody else on the website, so we don't want to do that, we want to support our community, do you guys agree? Do you guys agree? That's what we're talking about, alright, thank you. Don't forget to write your questions in the hallway, folks, if you have any questions, please, okay? Questions in the hallway, to help yourself, drop them in that little basket we told you earlier, when we start very soon. We've got a full house here, folks, and we've got a lot of people outside representing YLP, let's give ourselves a round of applause here. Folks, if you're in the fire department here, let's give them a round of applause. I also want to give a shout out to our security in the YLP, because if it wasn't for them, our fire department would not have found the houses. Folks, can we all ask you to stand up, we're going to be saying the political allegiance right now. If you have your hats, please take them off, if you have hairpieces, please keep them on. There we go, one, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seen, go ahead and clap, come on now. Okay, folks, here we go, this is Chris.
Okay, good evening, and welcome everybody, my name is Chris Christoffersen, I'm the local battalion chief for Cal Fire and Madera County Fire here in the Coors Hold area.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Christopher Hayes, I'm the captain of Station 10 East of the Lakes Park.
We'd like to welcome everybody, and thank you for coming out this evening, we think this is a wonderful opportunity, and we have to discuss what's going on in the community with you, and keep you informed, that we're doing what we can to help you out, and answer any questions you may have. Like was that mentioned before, if you do have questions, please get them written down, so we can go through those, and answer those when the time is ready. I'd like to start off by introducing our fire chief for Cal Fire and Madera County Fire, Chief Nancy Corbridge.
Good evening, I really do want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, this is quite a large group, and as my division chief commander was, the division just mentioned, I hope we're not exceeding the fire marshal limit.
I'm dying on right now.
A little worried about that right now, alright. The other question that we've received fairly early on, even before we get into this issue, is why are we shrouded, why are our badges shrouded? And I wanted to let everybody know that just a couple of days ago, there was a firefighter killed in Northern California, a US Forest Service smoke jumper jumped from a plane, and as he went through the tree, debris from the tree unfortunately killed him. So that is why we're shrouded, and firefighter's name is Luke Sheehy, he actually was a seasonal firefighter for Cal Fire for five years, prior to working for the US Forest Service, so we have a, you know, great sense of loss in the Cal Fire fire family as well, so thank you for asking about why we're shrouded, we appreciate that. So one of the reasons that I contacted the YLP, where is Michael Mavio, your general manager, was to ask that we have a town hall meeting, and some of you were probably here a couple of weeks ago, when Supervisor Wheeler had a town hall meeting, this was right after one of the fires on Rappisville, we had lost a structure unfortunately, so we were able to answer a few questions, but what became apparent after this last weekend, with the large number of fires that occurred in a couple of days, was that we needed to be a little more proactive with you, so we want to apologize for not being as proactive as we could have been early on, but we do have a plan for what's going on, we are very, very involved with what's happening here in the East of the Lakes Park area, and what I'm going to start with is giving you a little bit of the ground rules of what we're going to be doing today. So for Cal Fire, we are also the Cooperative Fire Protection Agreement of Madera County Fire, that's why you see us in cooperative forums, we're the oldest Cooperative Fire Protection Agreement for Cal Fire, started in the early 1920s, so we're very proud of being the oldest now, and we take that job very, very seriously, so I wear two hats, I wear your county fire chief hat, I also wear the state unit chief hat for Madera and Madera Close and Resett. With that, there's a lot of things that go on when you have a series of fires in a small general area, and we have fires in YLP, there happens to be a lot of structures in a small concentrated area, with people traveling in and out constantly all the time, and when you have that, there is the potential to have more fires, you have people moving around, you have more potential for fire. So what started for us as an early fire season this year, in April, is added to some of the concerns, we're not generally seeing fire behavior as we've seen now in June, the way we're seeing it this year, so it started So it started for us actually in April. Cal Fire was able to move their fire season date up in May. And we've gotten our engines, we've gotten firefighters on early so we could bring our engines up. I'm sure you're well aware that we have a seasonal workforce. We increase our state responsibility, fire protection in the summer. It gets decreased in the winter because there's not, obviously, there's not going to be vegetation fires in the winter. So we have brought on our full force early in May. Now, as I said before, fires have started and have been going on in YLP since the early April months. And we've been tracking them consistently. We've had a few fires that, at the beginning in May, seemed suspicious. The problem is, is that suspicious doesn't mean arson. It simply means that we can't determine all the causes. So I've asked our fire prevention group to go back and to give me an actual tracking of what has gone on over the last few, not the last couple of months. So in the Yosemite Lakes Park area, we have had about 35 fires, counting the two that we had yesterday. Of those, about 15 to 16 are undetermined. Only 15 to 16. Of those, even some of those, while they're undetermined, are probably not arson. So they don't have any cause that would lead us to believe that that would be the actual cause. So what I've heard is that folks are irritated and upset. Are you mad?
Yeah.
Are you pissed?
Yes!
So are we! Not only am I concerned about your safety, but I am concerned for the safety of all of my firefighters that respond every single day. It's the very reason why I asked to have a town hall meeting, because you are the eyes and ears of what is going on here in YLP. You are going to see things. Now, when you see things, I need you to share them appropriately. Not on Facebook, and not on Twitter. And believe me, I have firefighters I have to have the same discussion with, so. Welcome to their world. So I'll get to some causes in just a second. I understand that your purpose for discussing on Facebook or Twitter is because you think you have information. If you have information, we're going to give you an ability to contact our fire prevention officers. We have a large force of fire prevention officers that have been working in the Yosemite Lakes Park area for over a month. This is very, very important to us. So they want to get your information. But what happens, just so you know, when it gets shared publicly, methods, or potential suspects, and that kind of stuff, then we don't know if the information we get later is truthful information, or whether it's something somebody has read, or something somebody thinks they saw on TV, or maybe it was banter they heard, maybe at the restaurant. So we know that you have the information, and we want that information. We're just asking you to share that appropriately. That's how you can help us. And we're going to talk a little bit about arson awareness and how you can be good witnesses. So just so you are aware of some of the causes that we have had, and this is very common. But some of the causes we've had in the early beginning of fire season are the fact that people are a little less careful with respect to fire safety. So we want you to be out there and clearing your property, but we don't want you to do that in the heat of the day. There's, we've had fires started by rock strikes, metal on rock. We've had heated tires that have started fires. Unfortunately, we've even had a couple of PG&E started fires, because we haven't got through all of our clearance issues, correct? So you see how that works. So there have been several equipment caused fires. And I will tell you that we do have a rash in the entire unit of equipment caused fires. And we love that you guys are clearing your property, but we're just asking that you find the best time of the day, which is early in the morning, to do that, and that you still make arrangements that should you strike something, have water out there, have a shovel out there. The same thing you would do if you had the ability to have a burn pile, be prepared for that. Okay? So a lot of, like I mentioned earlier, a lot of the causes are still suspicious in nature. But yes, we do obviously have an issue with respect to arson in the YLP area. Now, with that said, I cannot discuss methods. So when you ask questions later in the evening, please feel free to fill out your cards out there, because we want to answer as many questions as we can. But when you ask questions about who's doing it, what's the suspect vehicle, how do you know? I can't answer those questions, because that would make me be on Facebook. Right? My fire prevention chief might just shoot me himself. So there has to be an ability for us to maintain integrity with respect to an investigation. I'm sure that you all understand that. It's the same thing with, for instance, a homicide investigation, or a burglary investigation. The same thing applies with respect to the fire. So when you hear us say that a fire is undetermined, it may be because the only way we could tell you something different would be to disclose something that we would not want out of the public. So it is not for a lack of not wanting to give you information, and that's specifically why we called this evening together for you all. We do want to be, we know that you're concerned, we know that you're irritated. We are equally concerned and equally irritated. Okay? So I do, again, really appreciate everybody coming out. And what I'm going to do is turn it over now to my division chief. This is Rich Droson from Madera, excuse me, from the Mariposa Division. But he was battalion chief here in Madera, and built a lot of the plans he's going to discuss with you today. And he's really intimately involved with that. So I figured that would be an excellent opportunity for Rich to reengage in the Madera side. So thank you very much, and I'll turn this over to Rich.
Okay, I want to go through how the fire dispatches work, and how the Cooperative Fire Protection works. What's the fire department's role, and how the sheriff's office, and CHP, and how everybody kind of dovetails together to come together with a good response for your emergency services. We also have the added advantage here in YLP is we have some security within the park. So we utilize those personnel heavily for some of our traffic control. So if we have a reported fire at an intersection within the park, how do you guys notify? Who do you call? 911. It's universal, it's out there. That goes to what's called a PSAP, goes to one of the dispatch offices. And then if it's on a cellphone, it'll go to CHP. Usually if it's on a landline, it'll go into Madera County. And then right away, when you say, "I've got a fire," they transfer it to the Cal Fire Dispatch Center, which is in Mariposa. So the first person that gets to Mariposa, they're going to have a lot of questions for you. So they're going to, what's the location? What do you see? What's it doing? What kind of fire is it? The second person that calls, they're just going to try and make sure, okay, is this the same incident? Are they reporting it in the same location, or is this another fire a mile away? So that second, third, fourth, fifth, a lot of times, I worked in dispatch for about four years. You'll get 40 to 50 calls. So if you're the 49th person calling in, you're probably not going to get a lot of time to talk to the dispatcher. They're going to be telling you, okay, we've got it, this is where the fire's at, this is what's going on, and then they're going to be dispatching you. So as soon as that happens, they get that information, and they set off a series of tones that activate some pagers. You might hear beeping and other stuff like that, but it activates a radio pager. So in this case, we had a fire, we're simulating one, you know, around the corner, let's say. Okay, I'm sorry, I'll get a little closer to the microphone. So in that case, we're going to activate the pagers. Company 10's pager's going to go off. The next in company, I believe, is Company 8, in Lakes. So you're going to get two county engines. Then you're going to get a full response from Cal Fire and the other resources around here. So you're going to get sometimes nine engines, two bulldozers, two battalion chiefs, and then at least two fire crews, the hand crews that you see, 17 people crews that are out there cutting line. So, and we're going to go into some aircraft. You're going to get an air attack, you're going to get two air tankers, you know, the water dropping, or the retardant dropping air tankers, and you're probably going to get a helicopter. So the helicopters are the ones coming in, dipping out of your legs and helping us control the fire. So it's a big suite of resources that are coming together all at once to try and mitigate that fire and keep it as small as possible. So as the fire starts to build, the first units will get that scene, and they'll start establishing, some will go left, some will go right. The whole name of the game is to start containing the fire and start putting it out. Now, we have these little problem things out in front of us called structures. So our number one priority is life. Number two priority is property. And then as we move down, then we need to contain the fire. So as we pull up, as the captains and the battalion chiefs and others pull up, they have to make a decision. What do we do with the structures? Are they able to defend themselves? That's not scripted, by the way. So how, is, does the structure have its clearance? Can, is the structure immediately threatened? Or do we have to put our resources on that structure? Or can we start doing some perimeter controls, start putting it out? As the fires start growing, and they get much bigger, what we'll do is we'll establish an incident command post. So we have a command post. We'll call for the SO to come down and tie in with us. And then we'll also call for the park security to come together, and so that we can all put together a plan. One of the things that we use is we have fire evacuation guidelines. So we have these guidelines, we've sat down with the SO, we've done some training with them, and with CHP, and we've done some joint table tops. We have some evacuation advisories. These are the notices that we'll put out. This is issued to alert the media and the public of potential evacuation orders. Contains general information of the incident and how to prepare. So that's just to kind of get the media heads up, so the information's out there. The next level is an evacuation warning. This is issued when evacuation order is imminent. Affected populations are to prepare to evacuate and be ready to immediately evacuate at notice. Affected populations are to wait for further instructions. How do you wait for further instructions? You start listening to the radios, right? You start looking and seeing what information is coming out. If there's an SO deputy driving around saying, "It's time to evacuate in the PA, it's time to evacuate." That's not when you start putting the stuff in the truck. Hopefully, the stuff in the car and the truck is already there. The last level that we have is evacuation order. This is issued when there's a recognized immediate threat to life or property. The evacuation order contains specific geographic areas to be evacuated and a procedure to be followed. So us in the fire service, we don't conduct the evacuations. What we do is we say, we recommend to the sheriff's office, that this area, these roads be evacuated. And then they go through a process, they use a program called EverBridge, which is our, how many of you have heard of Reverse 911? Okay? Reverse 911 is actually a company, it's a name of a product. What we're using is a program called EverBridge in Madera County. It's also the same one we use in Reseda. It's an outstanding program that we use that can contact you and can tell you, and we can draw a box on a computer, and it'll call all the numbers associated with that. And Sheriff Anderson, do you have a minute to talk about that? I'm putting him on the spot. What was it, one of the, EverBridge?
Okay. We started off talking about 911, and how many of you have phones in your home? Every month, on your phone bill, you're paying an extra dollar for 911 services. And we are locked, and that is a statewide program that's required. And we are the 911 PSAP, Public Safety Action Point for Madera County. So, as you said, if they, we don't order evacuations, but if they tell us one is imminent, let's see, people know. We can draw a circle on our computer, and we can let everybody know in that circle, evacuation, stand by, make your order. And then when the actual order comes, we will make that happen. What's the problem with this system?
No phone.
If you're under 30, you probably don't have a landline phone or access. So... The EverBridge program that he was talking about, we have that here in Madera County, it's called MC Alert. But you, not like the phone company, they have to keep track of all the signups and all the disconnects and all that, and let us know three times a month. But on these, you have to tell us that you have a cellphone, that you have a computer, that you want to be notified by a text message, that you want to get a recorded message, whatever it is. But you have to contact us. You can call the sheriff's department, and we'll sign you up. Or you can go on a line, and it's mcalert.org. And the problem is, you will know if there's some type of emergency. You can also use it for, let's say we've been locked down for school. You've got kids in that school, you might want to know about, has school been locked down? You can also sign up for that. You can sign up with many cellphone numbers if you want. If you want your kids to know, if you want your sister that's in Mariposa County to know, put their numbers in. One of the problems is, you may be down at Disneyland, and all of a sudden, an alert comes up, and so, Michael, it's vacation, but you will be notified. But anyhow, the system is there, you are automatically signed up for landlines. You've got to sign up yourselves for cellphones. Any questions? No, no tougher questions. Alright, thank you.
Sheriff, that was perfect. What we're doing now is we've established an incident command post. We have a fire, and it's burning in an area. And right here, what we have up here is, we have a map of the Yosemite Lakes Park area. I'm going to get some feedback here, I guarantee it. So we've got 41 coming through here in Indian Lakes, Yosemite Lakes Park, 400 coming down here. What we've done is, we've gone and pre-planned every community in Madera County. I've got more up here, there's Bass Lake, there's Oakhurst over here. If you guys want to see them after, we can show you. And we have little bullet points here, and I apologize, probably the only people in the front row can see it. But what this does is this puts the sheriff's office, Cal Fire, Madera County Fire, literally on the same page. These are the maps that are in every battalion chief's truck, and several of the engines. They're folded up like this, they're not on a nice poster board like that. But what it does is it allows us to identify roads. There's traffic control points here. Basically, what is a traffic control point? If we really want to close down Yosemite Springs Parkway, where are the natural places where you want to stop traffic? 41, right? How about 400? Any place where you can get resources that can turn around. Why would we want to shut down a road? Why do you think? You know how big those fire trucks are, and how excited the people are that are driving them? They're all professional drivers, I can tell you. But things can go wrong. There's a lot of equipment moving in and out. Those dozers alone on a transport take up a lot of room. We need the whole road. And not only that, where the fire's going, and how it's going to be done, sometimes we need that road because that's our containment line also. We don't need a bunch of cars lined up there while fire's hitting that road. So we will shut down roads, we'll do hard closures. We will also do what's called a soft closure. And it's not us doing it, we're working with the sheriff, we're working with CHP. Soft closure, that's usually later on in the fire, maybe that night, we've caught it, and we only want residents in there. We don't want a bunch of looky-loos. Because what's one of the worst things you can do? Get out there and drive and see what's going on. Look for yourself. The problem is, now we've got all this equipment going back and forth, we've created a problem where there wasn't one before. So if the fire's progressing, the fire's getting larger, we'll do, we'll call in strike teams. We'll get five engines from Mariposa County, five engines from Fresno County. We just had 10 engines from Fresno County in the unit helping us out. Some were from Fresno County Fire, some were from Fresno Cal Fire, and then we had a bunch of resources from Mariposa. That's the way the state is set up with the mutual aid, automatic aid arrangements. California does it better than any other state, and probably better than any place in the unit, or in the world, as far as how we share resources. We can set up a 2,000-person camp and have 500 engines there in 24 hours. You can't do that anywhere else, okay? That's done in California. So that's a good thing. The US Forest Service, great partner, BLM, great partner, and all the county fires. So our fires will scale up as the need scales up. And then we try and get them to scale back down as quickly as we can. That's, we're trying to be fiscally conservative there. Try not to spend too many dollars. But we want to have the resources there. One of the things we just wanted to kind of go over is, we do have a structured defense plan. It is established for your community. We have good information, some of it we can share, some of it's confidential, on how to tackle fires, on where to move the people for evacuation centers, where to have staging areas. This community is great, because we have some safe refuge areas in this community. We cannot define that stuff ahead of time very well, because it literally depends on which direction the wind is blowing. So you can't predict a lot of stuff. If you have a fire, I'm going to turn this down. I don't need to hear it. If you have a fire in the community, and the wind is blowing in the wrong direction, well, a lot of your plan's about the wind. Because a lot of our fires have depended on which direction the wind is blowing, and how the terrain is set up, and how the fire's burning. Majority of the time, we contain the fires at less than 10 acres, and within the first operational period, 90 to 95% of the time. It's very rare to have a fire that runs and burns multiple days. So, kind of with that, Chris, I think you were going to go over some of the stats for your Company 10. Go through that. Good afternoon. I know a lot of you here, and I know a lot of you are big supporters of Company 10 here at the park. What I can tell you is that I have 14 on staff at Station 10.
What I can tell you is that I have 14 on staff at Station 10. And on average, I have about, let's just talk about yesterday's fire, I had a 79% turnout. And these are all people, I don't have one retiree on my fire department. I'd like to have some. I'd like to get some people out of this room to join the fire department. What I'm saying is that Engine 10 has been predominantly the first-in or second-in engine in all the fires within the park. There has not been one fire in the park within the last six months where Engine 10 was not on it. So your volunteer fire company here in the park is working effectively and in cooperation with our brothers in law. Sisters and sisters? So what I can tell you is that we're getting good turnouts. And there's the cooperation between the two agencies because really, we're one agency. We're a different patch, but we're one agency. Every CAL FIRE person that I see out here came up through the volunteer program. So we're all brothers in a sense and sisters in a sense. So Station 10 is working the best that they can to mitigate any of the issues here. But as you know, we have limited resources within our park. We have two fire operatives, and we have one squad. And that's great for little stuff, right? We're talking, we get these big fires, and that's when CAL FIRE really comes into full. You don't have a better fire department than CAL FIRE for vegetation fires. They are the premier firefighting authority, I would say, in the western United States, without a doubt. They have all the resources. They come down and swoop down into a fire and knock it down quick. The reason why we don't have homes burn in our community is because we stopped them. They may be lit, but we stopped them. And that's what we do. So I know you guys have a lot of concerns, but know that we're there. We're working. My firefighters are working the best they can. A lot of them work between 40 and 72 hours a week because a lot of them are emergency services outside of serving their community and volunteer service. So I have a lot of my firefighters doing between 80 to 100 hours a week between the volunteer services and their actual professional jobs. And my hats go off to them. I have such a dedicated staff, and I have such a talent pool within my station that I'm blessed. And not only that, I have you. And everybody knows Yosemite Lakes Park Fire Department is one of the premier fire departments within Madera County. And the reason why is because of you guys. Your support that you show for our station every year, year after year. And I just want to thank you all.
Thank you, Chris. We're going to bring Sheriff Anderson back up here. He's got a couple more words on how the evacuation process works.
In any event, the worst happens, and if we do have to evacuate, the sheriff's department has two jobs. One is to safely evacuate you, and the other is to protect your property other than from fire, which these guys will be doing while you're out, from looters and so forth. The problem that we've run into, I've probably been involved in four or five dozen evacuations, is that the people will leave, and they will get out of there wonderfully, but they all want to go back in. And when we have the total lockdown, as was mentioned before, you're not going to get in there. So if you've got pets, take your pets with you. If you've got required medication, take your required medication with you because if we lock down, you're not going to be able to go back in there. And we will do our part and try and protect the property. The CHP will be running the roadblocks to let you in and out. And again, there's voluntary evacuations and there's mandatory evacuations. But if you really get down to it, I can order you to evacuate, and you can say no. And that has happened. So what we do is we have a little card where we say, "Okay, you're not going to leave. I need to know the name of your next of kin." We've got a bigger one. We would hope that, and I've never seen anyone refuse to evacuate, and we would hope that once your warrant gets out and you're notified, we'll either do it by first 911, we'll do it by SPA, as you mentioned, or we'll come to you and do what we have to. We'll make sure that everyone's out there and protect your property while you're gone. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Sheriff. That was perfect. Okay, now what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through your questions, and some of them are written together. And we have some panel members here, and we're going to defer some of the questions to them, some of the questions I can answer myself. The first one is, do we need to be concerned about water? That one really needs to go to somebody from Yosemite Lakes Park discussing the water and the systems and the other stuff that we have. Ken's right here. Please hide behind this board here.
My name is Ken Harrington. I'm the manager of the Yosemite Springs Park Fertility Company. We all have concerns when all these fires happen. Water company has concerns as well. Our goal and our job is to always maintain a good, adequate supply of water for all the needs. That includes fire. Some of you that have been here a long time know that in the past that we've had some difficulty in that area maintaining tank levels, things of that nature. A lot has changed over the years. We made a lot of improvements to the system, allowed us to produce more water, move that water effectively. We used to be kind of strapped where water produced in Long Hollow could only be used at Long Hollow, same with Northdome. And we'd have trouble in the valley, what I call the valley portion of the park or along the parkway, have trouble with water. But Northdome, we were having to turn the wells off because the tanks were full. We fixed that a number of years ago. I can now produce water down in the lower part of Long Hollow, move it up to Northdome if I need to, move it to Lily Mountain if we need to. We can shift this water from tank to tank and move it where we need to move it. So every time a fire call goes out, CAL FIRE is very good about giving us a phone call right away. They call our emergency phone number, same number that you folks call. Our personnel respond immediately. We assess where they are, what our storage situation is that supplies that particular area, and if need be, we start shifting water. If we need to increase production, we do that. We happened to do that on Tuesday, started increasing production. The fire last night, while CAL FIRE was taking all the water they needed for that fire, we were simultaneously flushing lines to try and keep the water quality up for the residents. And through all of that water, which I can tell you was quite heavy, we were still gaining elevation in our tanks. That means we were still moving additional excess water to storage. So, yeah. So while I can't sit here and tell you that we could never have a situation that would be so great that we'd never be able to, you know, it would never hurt the system enough to run out of water, it's highly unlikely with what typically happens in this area that we would not have the water that we need to suppress these fires. Again, it's, that's not 100%. I mean, we could have a series of catastrophes and disasters that could make all that change. But in the typical, normal course, and even with what's currently happening now, we're in good, strong shape with our water. I still have wells that we haven't even brought online. So your water system is sound. We can move the water, and we work very closely with these folks to make sure that we supply them with the water whenever and wherever they need it.
Okay, the next question I have is how can we get other property owners to cut down their overgrown weeds and grass? Okay, do we have any takers on that one? Karen, Karen Gilman?
We have a hazard abatement inspections that we do annually. The engine companies come out. They talk to you nicely. They ask you to, please give us defensible space. There's a mailer that goes out every year that a lot of people put in the RAM file that I would really like to get back in the mail instead of just throwing it away. It has excellent information on it. All the station numbers are listed on it. I routinely bombard you with news releases in the local newspaper. I do what I can to get on television and talk about how to properly clear, when to clear, how not to clear, not to use equipment. I have flyers, I have pamphlets, I have every mechanism to get you guys the information you need to get your property cleared correctly. If the property is owned by the bank, then it's the bank's responsibility or the realtor's responsibility to maintain it. And you not necessarily can go onto somebody else's property and do that for them. You wouldn't want them on your property. So that is something that we deal with on an annual basis around here. For suggestions for neighbors who can't clear their property or for other reasons are not clearing their property. If you guys know each other, hey, hello, how's it going? I see you've got some weeds out there. Would you mind if I came over and mowed over your lawn a little? Would that be okay with you? Nobody's going to turn down extra work if, you know, right? Or you know a 4-Her that's got a goat? Goats do a great job. Rent that place out, there's some goats. There's all kinds of suggestions. I have a local cell phone, 706-8828. Hey, you want to know about clearance? Or come on up. I have every pamphlet here for you. I'll drive to your house. I'll give you helpful hints, whatever, whatever you need to get the job done to save these guys when they come out there to fight fire. I'm willing to try.
So we find you got to come up. I'm sorry, I don't have one.
We've got an ordinance on that, too.
Ordinance in the valley?
We passed the ordinance last year when all the neighbors were calling about all the repossessed houses and the empty houses. So we passed the ordinance last year. If you got a house, you see it's empty, and I'll take care of you, call us. And call 311. We got the opposite 911. We call 311, and they'll give you whoever you need to talk to. But if they don't, if we get the address of that house, we could go after the bank, the loan company, or even the owner, and if they, and we give them a warning. And if they don't do it, we can fine them. And if they still don't do it, we can go do it and then put a lien on their property. So we passed that last year, so. And we've got quite a few already that's been done. So we don't, we're not bad for that. So please call 311.
You've got to go sign a paper. Thank you, Supervisor Wheeler. Okay, so, uh-oh, this one's a bad one. Are some of the fires started because of hot spots that were not entirely put out? Absolutely not. None of the fires currently that we're working on were, we call those rekindles. And you don't get too many of those in your career in this fire service because that's pretty serious. You keep the ones that you put out. Every once in a while, a weird wind will come up or a little fire tornado or something like that, and something can get away. It can happen. But none of the fires that we're dealing with here were as a result of that. So we're pretty diligent about that. That's why the couple fires that you see on Yosemite Springs Parkway, you'll see engines out there several days after the fact, coming back, looking at it, walking around it. That might be your hike for the day is to go check the fire. We're very careful with that. And I think that just goes to professionalism of the people that are trying to make sure that you guys are safe. What about weed abatement clearance lots not around some of these houses or somebody, an absentee owner? We've kind of covered that a little bit. Vacant lots, you do not have the 4291 requirements to clear a vacant lot up here in the mountains. In the valley, it's a little bit different. They have a mow-down that's supposed to be done every year. The ordinance is not the same up in the mountains. There's just simply too much wildland. If you look at, somebody has several thousand acres, it's not required to be mowed down the same up in the mountains. So vacant lots is, it doesn't have the same requirements, doesn't have the same rules. It doesn't apply. Down in the valley, it's different. Down in the valley, they can come, they can cite you, they can tell you, you got to mow this down. It's got to be done by, you know, June 1st, May 1st. May 1st, thank you, Chris, every year. It's not the same up in the mountains.
And we, Rich, we also go around, we've got a contractor that wants to don't do it. We've got a contract, go down and mow them or disc them up, and we charge them for that, too.
In the valley?
In the mountains.
That's an important distinction. That's not Yosemite Lakes Park. There's nobody going around. Can you write it down? It's, once we open that door, there's no closing it. Okay, so that's empty lots. We talked about that one a little bit. Let's see, the town hall meeting should have taken place a couple weeks ago. Also, the meeting should have been held in Riverco old school for a large number of people. And that's good advice.
That's my question. I have a follow-up for the fire marshal.
For the fire marshal. Write it down, bring it up, and I'll happy to talk about it. Yes, there's some information. We have to balance between, okay, we really want to catch what's going on, so we don't want to say too much because we don't want to give it away. Versus, okay, the public really needs to know some information. That's the reality. So that's always a balance that we have to strike. And sometimes, if we're close, maybe we don't want to say so much because we're going to catch somebody. But at the same time, we got to get the information out. So we recognize that, Chief?
And as I mentioned earlier, we were here just a couple of weeks ago right after the fire on Reavis, the 91 acre fire on Reavis, specifically because I was only about the third one in the park at the time, and we were trying to be proactive. So we were here a couple of weeks ago when Supervisor Wheeler had his town hall meeting. We asked if we could be a part of it. We were invited to that. And we're going to try to do it as often as we can. But we did have one just a couple of weeks ago, right here in this very room. Thank you.
Do you need to respond to some of those fires? Yeah. And I have been asked to be a part of it. There is not many that they have been.
Okay, so, okay, one of the questions came up about a power-caused fire, and I think the word was used, a PGE-caused fire. That's a very important distinction. We did have a fire that was caused by power, electricity. That's not necessarily, that could be the homeowner, that could be a PGE, that could be anything. So that's a very important distinction. That was actually caused on the homeowner's side of the meter, which belongs to the homeowner, okay? That was not on the PGE side of the meter. So that was...
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. What do you do if your neighbors have not cut their grass? So we talked about that a little bit already. But here's how we usually handle that. You can call one of the local stations, and you can make a complaint saying, "I have not, my neighbor's not cut their grass." Now, the captain's over here, of course, they're pringing right now. They will be happy to come out, they'll spend some time in the area. But generally, they're going to ask you two questions. What's the address that you're talking about? And what's your address? Because we're going to do at least two inspections that day. That's the fair way to be. That's the fair way to do it. Okay. If CAL FIRE, oh, I'm terrible at reading. Chris, help me out here. I can't read that one. Okay, I'm sorry, I can't read the delineate. My wife's a teacher. Honestly, I'm correct. Thank you. My wife's a teacher of minarets. So I have some connection with it. Most of them are here. Okay, if we have horses and we have to evacuate, where can we take them? So now, if you have horses, it's a risk versus gain thing. If you're going to load them up and put them in the horse trailers and then drive them out at the same time that we're driving in, there's a potential that you're doing more harm than good. And you might be putting the horses into a situation that maybe they would have been better off on a fed-down pasture. A lot of times, depending on the intensity of the fire, a low-intensity fire, and we've been having some fairly low-intensity fires, are not going to threaten animals within a pan that's been fed down. that's been fed down. Now, there are exceptions to that, of course there's exceptions, you have to make the best choice for your animals along those lines. Karen, do you have an answer?
I do. There are a number of animal evacuation groups in this area, and one of them, I do believe is 3E, and that is an equine evacuation, you can join that. There's also the stable here in Yosemite Lakes Park, capable of boarding your horse if the, the need would arise, and it is a designated safety zone, but your horse is probably more comfortable at home, it's an area that they know, but if you store them in barbed wire and were around there, drop air drops, dozers and such, you might wanna think about panels so that they're not injured, or they can't break down the fence and get out. But you really need to know, a lot of people don't have a horse trailer, if you don't have a horse trailer, who's gonna come and get you? How do you notify that person? When's your trigger point to call that person? There's a lot of cloth that needs to go behind it. I suggest you get together with other horse people in your area and come up with a plan where you can all help each other, because you're not all gonna be home at the same time, and what horses are gonna go, and where they're gonna go, and how they're gonna be kept and identified.
Thank you.
Can I add to that? We've got a volunteer group that will come in, we used them at Quartz Mountain when we evacuated that about three or four years ago, and we took the horses to the burial grounds.
They can't do it yet.
Yeah, we've got a volunteer group that will move large animals, as a matter of fact, we used them when we evacuated Quartz Mountain about three or four years ago, and we took the horses to the burial grounds, and people got them there, so. And I think as a, worth, the very last thing, if we're around or the fire people are around, if their horse isn't in closure, it looks like they're fired, they'll be there, we can just turn to those.
We have, we have done that before, we have opened up pens and let horses get out if they're in imminent danger, but that's a rare, very rare conception. So what is the evacuation plan for Long Hollow? I'll give that a little attention. There's actually, you know, of course, if we have to close up Long Hollow, we weren't, aren't allowed to let anybody come back out of Long Hollow, because it does go down in there. There is a fire road that goes off via the Sequoia, that goes back to the Leedouton, that will be opened up in the event that there's any evacuations, as a secondary route, not only for people to get out, but we can always use that for fire equipment to come in. And I was able to decipher this other question that Chief Drogen has, and it was, is it cow fire or the association's responsibility to enforce fire rules? And the example was, a neighbor has approximately 20, 30 vehicles, and the neighbor has his place weeded. We can cite, or the weeds. Code enforcement can enforce for the vehicles, and because you are up here in a homeowners' association, there are specific rules to the association that can be enforced on their side also. Thank you, Chris. Okay, have we evacuated disabled person who is home alone? So we have another evacuation question. We, we call tho, that population the vulnerable population, so, and they're the ones that need that early warning and probably the most help. And Darren or Sheriff Anderson, whichever one on a vulnerable population or disabled person?
In the plan, it talks about people that might have difficulty moving out, and we have provisions to do that, we, it happened, we don't only take people out because of fires, plenty of other reasons where we make provisions to evacuate people or to move them if they're in danger, so, I wouldn't worry about it. We know someone's there, we'll take care of it.
Okay, the tones that are going off are not for hearing, so. Yes. Okay, that was a very good question about the disabled person on the same sheet, it says, if you have ammo in your house, should you notify the department of a fire? So if, if there's a fire, and your house is in the area, and you have a lot of ammo in there, do you need to notify the department? No, you don't. Very specific hazards like that, if they're within a structure, are pretty safe, and we actually sometimes will use structures as a safe refuge, because it takes a long time for fires to basically get inside of a house. So in that situation, no, you don't have to notify us, and we talked about the 50 phone calls earlier, that's 51, 52, 53. So, and, and the tolerance, and the number of people that are answering that, you know, the information is not timely, it's not good in that situation, but if you're safe, it won't burn. Yesterday, I couldn't reach the security to see the fire's location to know if I needed to get ready to leave. What number do I call for this information? So with the security, do we have any information that we can pass on there? The fire department, using the SO, will try and do the notifications if you need to evacuate. That's a personal decision for a lot of people. If, if it's, if you have a lot of stuff, and you need to start moving, getting ready, and you can see the fires getting bigger and bigger, then you might wanna prepare yourself. We have some very good handouts, and some good information. Karen, can you cover Ready Sec Go, is that something you can cover?
I have handouts.
Ready for Wildfire and Ready Sec Go, please, thank you.
Readyforwildfire.org is an excellent website for you, everything's in there that you can pull up, look at, at your leisure, but I also have everything that's on that website in hard copy. So it tells you how to prepare yourself, your house, your belongings, your pets, your prescriptions to make a to-go kit, it's got checklists, everything you can possibly need. I also have a evacuation sheet for animal evacuations that you can have, and a go, how to go, where to go, what to do, how to get out, and now I forgot the question. I think I derailed myself and gone down another path. So what was?
Website.
Website.
The website, readyforwildfire.org. It's an excellent website, you can go and look at what you want, it's user friendly, you can click on different spots, go to different places, download the checklist, put it on your refrigerator, talk to your family, talk to everybody that lives in the home, so that you're all on the same page, you all know the same plan, you all know where you're gonna go, and then if you get lost, because if one of you goes to River Gold School, the other one goes up to Oakhurst and sits in the Relyse parking lot, and somebody else goes to Fresno, you're not gonna find each other. Everybody in your family needs to know where you're gonna go, where you're gonna be, and what they're responsible for taking with them when they leave. Then you have a plan, you're not running around like a crazy person when the time comes, because you're, you don't know what to do, and you're looking for stuff, and you grab today's newspaper instead of grandma's wedding ring, okay? So stop and talk to your family, sit down at the table when there's no stress, make a plan, everybody get on the same page, and then practice your plan.
Very good, very good. Okay, this is the list of items that we can't talk about, Chief already told us, we can't talk about some of the prevention stuff, and put up this here, and set up that there, but one of the, one of the great items that I think somebody talked about was a community watch program, and, and I know, I know we have some of that set up, that's not really on the fire side of the house, but it falls more on the law enforcement side. I don't know if the sheriff wants to talk about that one at all, or we can move forward from that, I don't know. Darren McMac?
I'm Darren McMac, and I'm the lieutenant for the Madera Sheriff's Office, and as far as, we do have neighborhood watch program, and I know some of you may know Joanne Evans, who handles that program for us out of the Oakhurst substation, and we also have our citizens on patrol, and I think they have been a great help in doing traffic control so far. This thing's talking to me. Okay? But, but I think more importantly, it's important for you, you are our eyes and ears out there, for when you see something suspicious, to give us a call, and to be a good witness, and make that call instead of just going on and, and thinking it's not important, so I'll leave it at that.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, this is, this is probably one of the best questions of the night, and what can we do to help, coming from the public? How can we help? How do we make this situation better? There's a lot of things. Karen talked about some of the flyers that we have here, one of the things we have talked about is defensible space. Get your defensible space. If you have a hundred foot clearance around your house, and we have some very good flyers for that, the first 30 feet needs to be cut down pretty close, so that, you know, that fire, even though you love that little piece of manzanita out there, that manzanita during a fire won't love you back, okay? So you gotta, you gotta make some choices there. We have some very good flyers out here, they're talking about breaking up the continuity of the fuels, so that a fire can't go straight through the manzanita and get right to your house. Give us that defensible space, because we have to make a risk versus gain assessment. Well, we're pulling up, and we have a fire threatening a house, if we can get in there, get some hose lines in there, and make an aggressive attack, we can probably stop and, and keep that fire out of your house. Not always, it's not always gonna work that way, but if you give us that space, that's what you can do to help. The other thing is, why do we have cul-de-sacs? Why do we have big turnarounds? Is that for parking your RV? That's what it seems like. If you look at the size of the engines that we're driving, the equipment that we have to carry, we need those cul-de-sacs, because we need to be able to go in, turn around, get back out, get pointed out, so that if things get bad really fast, we can get out. If we pull down a long narrow driveway, and have no ability to turn around, that's probably not a good place for us to be, we'd probably have to make another decision, maybe a decision that that engine isn't gonna be parked at that house. That's a pretty tough thing to do. None of us, we've been taught, early on, we don't lose structures, you know, the fire consume the structure, but all of us firemen take it to heart. Every time that somebody loses a home, it, it rips our heart out, we don't wanna see that happen. So we will go that extra mile, we've injured people, a lot of people, we've killed people trying to get in there in situations that they shouldn't have been at. So how do you help us? Get your clearance. Be careful when you're mowing. A lawn mower is meant to mow lawn, not dry grass, there's a difference there. A spinning metal blade that strikes a metal rock at two o'clock in the afternoon is a pretty expensive ticket, okay? You don't wanna pay it, your homeowner's insurance doesn't wanna pay it, and you don't wanna burn down your neighbor's house, that's how you can help us. Be careful when the wild man. We choose to live here for a reason, we love the, we love the grass, we love the brush, we love the area, but it's dangerous for us. We have to, we have to take that responsibility very seriously, and we have to be careful with fire. We've cut off all burning, there will be no burning, and Karen's gonna talk to us a little bit about some of the fire prevention on July 4th, because we know what happens on July 4th. Absolutely, Karen's gonna mention one more thing, Chris?
When you did your landscaping, not every green thing is equal. When I got driving around in your area, eucalyptus trees, oleander, rosemary, junipers, they burn very well, they're, they're really good fuel. Pick wisely, most of the nurseries in our area now are very familiar with fire resistant plants, they, they are also drought tolerant, and so they will help you with your water bills, they'll be beautiful, and they'll still be fire resistant and not help you, okay? So thank you so much, and, and go to your nursery and ask them, please let me see the fire resistant plant. There's some beautiful things that you can purchase to replace the juniper, and the oleander, and the eucalyptus.
Chris?
Yeah, I'd like to address what we can do to help. What we can do, first of all, is be a team. We all live in the same community, we're all members of this homeowners' association, we can support our association, that's the first thing that we can do. The second thing that we can do is we can go to volunteerfirefighter.org, and you can join my station, and become a participant in protecting your community, in helping your neighbor in need. I need people, okay? And the third thing that you can do is you can join my auxiliary. Just because you can't be a frontline firefighter, or feel that you don't wanna do that, you can certainly support our fire station by participating within the organization itself. I need people to join my department, either on the firefighter's side or the auxiliary side, because we're all in this together, we all work together, okay? Thank you.
Okay, couple more here. Is the burn season over, but each? Yeah, it's over. Okay, but we still have growing weeds and dry trees, let's see, branches that need trimming, where in Madera County can we take the piles of dry vegetation so they aren't accumulating on our property? That's a great question for somebody else.
Oh, Supervisor Wheeler, what problems do we have up here?
Our dump.
Yeah, we do, we do have the North Fork dump, I, I know they were working on trying to get a bio plant in the North Fork area, and that's, at least in the planting stages and permitting stages, and, and that will be a wonderful tool when we get to that point, but for right now, you know, there's, basically you have to haul it away to either the drop off facility, the dump, pay to have it hauled off with your garbage, or chip it up where you can reuse it with landscaping around your home, or burn it during this period of time when we allow the burn.
There is, chippers is rental, rentable at the rental places in Oakhurst, and they also, there's a lot of guys that'll come to your place and chip it.
Okay, we have people inside now, I can get you a mic.
Supervisor Wheeler was just saying that we do have chippers available throughout the communities up in Oakhurst with, that are available for rentals, and there are small businesses and individuals throughout the communities, not only down here in the Coorsville area, YLP, but also throughout eastern Madera County, that do do chipping as side work, and that will come out to your home and chip up your items for you to help minimize those fire hazards.
Okay, can you, Karen, cover fireworks?
Yeah, the last thing we've got, well, and before I jump off on this, you know, just one other echo about that defensible space, about a month ago, it's been about that long now, we had the Ranger fire on Ranger Circle, that was probably one of the first bigger ones we had of this series, and we stopped the edge of that fire at the home that had the defensible space at the top of the hill, and we used their cleared driveway as one of our control lines to stop that fire. So I just wanna echo to everybody the importance of not only for your own safety and saving your homes, but giving us that extra hand to, that defensible space was used to help stop that fire and prevent it from burning any further part of the hill in that area. And the next thing we have, we'll talk about the 4th of July firework festivities. Is anyone aware that 4th of July, or excuse me, fireworks are not legal in the eastern Madera County? Okay, I got my first correct answer. Basically, you know, we use the Madera Canal as a reference point, but essentially you can say Highway 145 off the 41 corridor, once you pass that intersection, fireworks are illegal of any kind in Madera County, including Sierra National Forest, National Forest, and Mariposa County. So it's, it's, you know, granted, everybody feels that's safe and sane, because they are allowed in the valley, they ought to be allowed up here, but the fire danger is just far too extreme, and, and that includes everything, as in sparklers and snakes, and some of the things that just crawl on the ground, it's still a firework.
And I know that you can buy fireworks at the Chevron Station down there on 41, and is that Avenue 12? Doesn't mean it's legal to have fireworks displayed in or around that area at all, and please don't bring them up here. Every year, we have a number of people in Yosemite Lakes Park that choose to display their fireworks on the 4th of July, which makes our job that much tougher. So I hope that you spread the word that it's a zero tolerance, we don't want fireworks here, it's the hottest, driest, worst fire season we've had, please go watch a professional thing, go visit somebody in town that, where it's legal to have fireworks, but encourage your neighbors, this is not the year for 4th of July display. We also have a program, it's the Volunteers in Prevention, and we have a ham radio operator group in that section, and every year, they give up their 4th of July with their families to patrol your area. We patrol a number of areas in eastern Madera County, and we've been fortunate enough to recruit about 20 new volunteers, yay, and they're going to be also patrolling parts of Mariposa County for us this year. So there are eyes and ears to find you guys that are shooting off the fireworks before you cause a fire in the area. So we just hope that you keep it safe and sane for us, and please do not use fireworks.
And I just wanted to add on that, just to echo the severity of that, if you do get caught with fireworks, it is a potential of a thousand dollar fine and one year in prison, and depending on the quali, quantity, excuse me, of the amount of fireworks that you have in your possession, you're looking at three years in jail and $50,000. So it's not something we pay lightly, it's very seriously, and we hope that everybody can enjoy the 4th of July, be safe, help celebrate our country, but do it, do it safely without being careless.
Well said, well said. Okay, so, I live on Big River Way, and my home's been weeded and cleared, but my neighbor, okay, we're talking about the neighbor, yeah. Oh, here's a good one, is there any way to brush along the roads that can be cut back? Who's responsible to make sure that it gets done? So one of the things, Mount Wade Camp is my camp, that's where I work, that's where my office is, we worked for a lot- We can't just come out and, and do the, do the right-of-way clearance along those lines. Your county has a very aggressive program, they've been working on a lot of the roads, but there's no way to do all the roads, and there's no way to get it all done, so it has to be prioritized. Now, um, Chief Restorson here, uh, has set up some, uh, fuel breaks around your community, has worked on some stuff, there's some roads that are maintained. Some of that stuff is very visible, so it's not very useful. So, those are strategically placed, it's easier to say than, uh, not that easy to say, I guess. So, um, we aren't working on all of those roads, especially the ones that are in a critical spot that'll help us contain the line, we can put some efforts into that, but there's no way that we can, uh, do all that for the community unless the community has some other ideas for that within the park. Currently, no. Okay, so, PG&E, we talked about that one. Oh, rewards for arsonists and conviction. We can talk to that one. Karen, that's kinda prevention. No?
Uh, there was some...
There's a standing.
Yeah, it's ten thousand dollar reward, and I, I'm sorry, I don't know if that is, uh, hinged on the conviction or not, but, uh, it's worth it just to save your house and property, to call the 1-800-47 arson line and leave your information.
Very nice. Okay, so, um, one of the questions we had earlier was, what can we do to help? Uh, how to be a good reporting party? What's probably the most important thing when you call 911? What's the first thing they're gonna ask you? Location, location, location. We've heard that one, right? If you're calling up and say, "I just saw a suspicious vehicle, the guy got out, and then he drove away, and now there's a fire." Okay? That is great, okay? If we see that, what's the first thing we're gonna ask you?
License.
Did you get a license?
Yeah.
Okay, that ties it back to a specific, a single vehicle. Okay, if it's too far away, you can't get the license, or you don't wanna, what other pieces of information are available at that time?
Color, make, year.
What's the color? What's the make? What was the person wearing? How tall were they? How heavy were they? What was the color of their hair? Are they wearing glasses? All those little pieces of information. So, if you see something that shoots your blood pressure right up like that, how good are you gonna be at remembering something? Not very good. You know, the old saying, the sharpest, or no, the dullest pencil is sharper than the sharpest mind. Have a piece of paper, have something you can write down, if you see something that's bugging you and you're worried about it, write it down. You'll remember it because it's on that piece of paper. Then call 911. Then get that information out there, get that information in. Be a good reporting party, that's a great way to help us. If you see something that's wrong, write it down, collect that information, get that license. If you can't get the license, describe it. Describe what the vehicle is that we're looking at. If you got a camera phone, somebody's waving a camera phone back there. Okay, yeah, we're in the 21st century, pull it out. They're obviously less than twenty, one of my kids, I can tell right now. Pull out their camera phone, they'll videotape the whole thing, then post it on Facebook, and we're done. That I would wanna see on Facebook. The rest of the conjecture is not helpful. It doesn't help our process. So, see what you need to see, and go from there. I think I'm running out of questions. Boss, you wanna, any more, or is it...
Had a gentleman come by who was, uh, not of the, the younger generation, and he had one of their regular old cell phones, and said, "I do a lot of walking, and I see some suspicious cars. How, how am I supposed to remember that by the time I get back to the house?" So, I told him to just text it into his phone and keep it there for himself. When he gets back to the house, he'll have the license plate or whatever he had, or just take the picture and take it back to the house. So, there are other options with your cellphone if you're not quite the techno wizard.
Yeah, call your own answering machine, that's a great one. People forget about that. It definitely works. Call your own answering machine, people forget about that. Uh-oh, we're back on the PG&E kid again. Can something be done about PG&E leaving large piles of brush for the property owners to clean up? Okay, uh, PG&E was great. When they came out and cleared, um, around my property, they asked me, they said, "Do you want the wood? If you want the wood, we'll, we'll cut and leave the wood, then you can cut it up, or do you want us to chip it?" So, when they're working, my experience with them has been excellent. So, I don't know if somebody else has a negative experience along those lines, but I would contact PG&E if, and it might not even be PG&E, you might be blaming them for something somebody else did, so that's reality. So, I've had nothing but positive reaction there, but I would call the company, and, uh, if there's a concern, especially if it's close to your house, and it's causing you not to be compliant, it's something that we can address, or they can address, and we can help you address it. Karen, you got another one?
Well, I didn't talk to all I saw, just cigarettes out the window.
Oh, cigarettes out the window. Oh, yeah. It's infuriating, especially when it dances in the middle of the night, you can see all the sparks and everything else. It takes a very specific, uh, set of circumstances for a cigarette thrown out to cause a fire. Okay, so, the humidity has to be very low, the fuels have to be receptive. Ordinarily, a cigarette does not easily cause a fire unless somebody's done something to that cigarette to help it cause a fire. That's also, uh, a common way to start a fire. So, if you see somebody innocently throwing a cigarette out the window, it may not be so innocent. Write down what you see, pass on that information, especially if you see smoke in your room in here. So, that would be a good indicator it wasn't so innocent. So, Karen, any more? I think we're getting towards the end.
They're right there, in front, um, yeah, yeah.
Oh, man. How come some of the fires are so big and some are so small? Yeah, actually, here's, here's the good part, is, it's not so good, but the fires that we've had in this community, we have not had to initiate evacuations on any of them. If the Lily Fire, the one that started down on Route 400, had gone another road or two, we probably would've had to pull the trigger, pull the SOM. All of the fires have been contained very small relative to what their potential is. Okay, so, some of the fires, what causes a fire to grow bigger is a ton of factors. We go to school for weeks to learn that, so I can't really give you a good canned answer, but wind is one of the biggest ones. And slope, if the fire, you know, water runs downhill very fast, well, water runs uphill, or excuse me, fire runs uphill the exact opposite, very fast. So, you gotta figure water, fire, the exact opposite, one runs downhill, one runs up, and that's just the reality of the way the fires burn. Uh, does a treehouse burn worse than houses? Or Hannah, okay. Hannah, a little heart, too. Little smiley face and a heart. Hannah, your treehouse should not burn down, it's safe. I can't guarantee that or something. What is the pink stuff that comes out of the planes? Also from Hannah, the little heart. Okay, the technical term for that is dimonium phosphcheck. What that really means is that's a fire retardant that when it hits the fuels, it retards the ability of the fuels to burn. It's also good for the environment. If you break it down, it's actually fertilizer. So, uh, that is, so that we're not putting something into the environment. They used to drop borate. Some of the, some people will say, "Hey, I saw the borate bombers go over." So, they're not borate anymore because that used to sterilize the soil. And the color is there in order for the pilots to see where the drop stopped, so they can do the next drop, and then they can do the next drop, so they can build on their work. Otherwise, it's clear, it's kind of a gray without the color. This one's a really good one, I, I don't know if it's graded or not. What if you are home alone? Oh, that's kinda... Okay, so, if you are home alone, you should have a plan, you still have the ability to dial 911, and you need to talk to your parents and come up with what is your plan, if there's a neighbor, if there's something else. Karen, this is actually kinda new for me.
You gotta have a plan. Everybody in the house needs to know the plan. You have to practice your plan. Draw a picture of your plan, write out your plan, put it on your refrigerator. If you don't know where you're gonna go and how you're gonna get there, then it will never happen when the need arises. So, discuss your plan. Also, if you're a child and you're out there and you're at your family meeting spot, because that's part of your plan, right? You know two ways out of each room in your house, you know how to exit. Crawling low under the smoke to get out of your house, and when you get out of your house, where do you go from there? Your family needs a family meeting place so that you know where to go. If a stranger would come by and ask you, "Hey, I'm gonna take you to mom and dad because I know they're worried about you." If you're a kid, you don't get in that car. You say no, and you say no really loud, "The firefighters are coming," and you talk to them when they get there, okay? And never go back in your house if your house is on fire for any reason at all. There's nothing in that house that means more to your parents than you. So, once you're outside, you go outside, you stay outside, and you gotta have a plan.
Well put. So, the motto's "Have a Plan." Before I pass it back to Chief Corbridge for some closing comments, I wanna let you know that the full measure of efforts are being put into this. We are, this has our attention. If you can't tell, a big part of the management staff is here. My partner, Don Stein, who's the division chief for Madera County, couldn't be here because he's got another, uh, budget meeting, so he asked me to be here and try and come in and explain this, but this has our attention. We are taking as much efforts as we can to mitigate this. We realize how stressful it is that you are going through. You know, I wouldn't even wanna go to work having this going on. I understand that feeling, I've been there myself. My wife lost her house when she was a little girl, she still talks about it. So, you know, that's how much that it can affect you and it does affect you. We hear that, we understand it, we live it, and we see a lot more of it than we wanna see, but, Chief Corbridge?
Thank you, Rich. Actually, Rich just gave my last little spiel. Were you looking at my notes? No, I was just wondering. No. We, we do take this very, very seriously, that's why we've got such a large contingent of folks to be here, but there's also even a larger group of firefighters that are out there at their stations every day waiting to see what's gonna happen next. So, not only do you have your firefighters out there that are gonna take care of the issues that arise daily, we have a large fire prevention staff that's out there, as I mentioned earlier, patrolling where they need to be patrolling, and taking care of fire investigation where they need to take care of their fire investigation issues. So, Cal Fire is well involved, we are very grateful they gave us an opportunity to come speak with you at this town hall meeting, and so grateful to see the amount of folks that are here, because for every one of you, you'll probably give us talk to two or three more folks. And one of the big things that we've been preaching today is what? Preparedness. Having a plan. And so, one of the things that, um, I learned from risk management is that all of your rational thinking is in your frontal lobe. You think every day with your frontal lobe, but the second that you get stressed, the second that you get worried, that, that amount of rationality leaves because you've lost blood, you're stressed, you're worried, and you start to think with your middle brain. And your middle brain isn't as rational as your front brain, unfortunately. And so, you gotta fight or flight, and those are the things that are gonna start happening for you. But if you have a plan, and if it's written down, and you can pick up that piece of paper and it tells you, it might just be a reminder for you at that point, but it's a way to, to, to remember. When my father-in-law was having a heart attack, he was home alone, and when he called 911, he could not remember his address. He's lived at the house for forty-two years. That's what stress will do to you. So, even the smallest thing, that you think is, "I'm never gonna forget that," you very well may forget it. When I go to my father-in-law's house, his address is printed in large letters right by the phone. So, that, that was one of our biggest concerns, making sure that when we came to see you today, this is a positive environment for us to be, we want to be proactive and meet your needs, but it's also about being prepared. We're hoping that that's the message that you're gonna get. That preparedness is also in your community involvement, seeing that suspicious stuff, being a good witness and getting that information to the fire department, that's also about being prepared. So, we're very grateful again for the opportunity to speak with you, answer your questions. I hope that we answered, um, as many as we could, a lot of them are similar, but we hope we answered as many questions as we could. And should we have a need for another town hall, we'll be getting in touch with your general manager again, and we'll ask again to have an opportunity to speak with you. We're in no way, um, trying to avoid giving you information, we actually want to give you as much information as we can, we just can't give you the specific information that could hinder our investigation. So, thank you again for letting us come here and speak with you, and, uh, Supervisor Wheeler has a word for you.
Thank you, thank, uh, Cal Fire, I think we need to give another big round of applause. I appreciate all your coming, I wish more of you would've came at my town hall meeting to this. We had, we had a good crowd, but, uh, it's a lot better when here, huh?
Thanks for the fire.
Right, we're not gonna shut a fire to get people comfortable, that's it. But we had four, uh, Cal Fire people here that night, and they gave a good presentation too for about twenty, thirty minutes. And so, I just wanna thank everyone, and we've got all the right numbers, the sheriff has his number, county has a 311, so, don't beat bashful while calling, don't beat bashful turning your neighbors in. I turned my neighbor in. I don't want my house burned down because they're in there, so, yeah. And I'm gonna tell you one thing, they don't wanna say this, but I'll say it, that I know that if you haven't done, got your house safe, they will not stay there and try to protect it. They're gonna go find the houses that they can protect, because they're not gonna risk their lives, and they're not gonna risk their end. And I've seen many fires, they've gone on a blue and arrow over, all the brushes gone up, because everybody loved their brush, and the fire truck and a couple of guys got killed. I've seen the pictures of them. And working with the Coorsville Resource Conservation District for over twenty years, we've done many of these fuel breaks we have around this, all our communities, we get to see it all, so, get your place protected because they can't protect a mess, so, you gotta take care of your own mess. Thank you.
We're gonna leave a couple of maps up for you to see, we've got some great handouts that are available up here, we've got some, uh, market department personnel that are available for you to talk to for the next few minutes, and thank you for coming.
Let's give a round of applause for our fire department, Dr. Stan Robinson. Brother Stan, round of applause.